March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner, again, going to www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No person and no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So, good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, the Master Plan Committee. This is Latrell.
I have no further updates since our last meeting on November 30. The Master Plan Committee is meeting again on this Wednesday, December 16, at 7:30. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. It's a 7:05 public hearing. We have to wait three minutes before we can launch on that. So, are we able to do minutes?
Yes, we are, if you're willing. We have three sets of minutes for this evening.
I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from November 11, 2020, as written.
Second.
Andrew, you mean November 10.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's November 10, but you have it in the agenda written as November 11.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Seconded. So, the motion is to approve the meeting minutes of November 10. Any discussion? All seen, none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. What's the next set?
I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from November 16, 2020, as written.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mrs. Latrell.
Just one edit. Line 224, after criteria, I would put contingent on Town Council's opinion that the alteration of the roof sign is allowed.
Hey, Mimi, do you mind sending me that via email? Do you mind?
Nope.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? Seen none, all in favor of the amended motion? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. At 7:04, do we have time to do one more?
I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from November 24, 2020, and November 20. Oh, no, I just do the 24.
No, just the 30th, Andrew. The 24th is we're still working on.
Okay. Meeting minutes from November 30, 2020, as written.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I do have one comment. Lines 304 and 305, we missed a typo. It says tress instead of trees.
Oh, thank you. I'll make that.
I didn't catch it either.
Well, that's fine. I go blind here and there.
Okay.
So, that brings the number of typos in our minutes from Kate to one.
You're sweet. You're good to me. I have a lot of proofreaders.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Thank you, Kate.
Dawn, I'd like to just point out that that wasn't Kate's fault. That was taken from a waiver that I had typed in. And it was a copy. So, it wasn't Kate at all.
And number goes back to zero.
That's right.
Excellent, thank you. See, it is now 7:05. So that we can continue, we can open the continued public hearing from 60 Richards Road, Mooney Baseball Field, major site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from October 19, November 2, November 16, November 30. We'll ask the town planner to give us an update, including the Zoom conference call that we had shortly after our November 30 meeting.
Okay, quickly, just recap. Last meeting, November 30. We were continued to this evening. At that meeting, it was determined that there should be coordination between Fussin' O'Neill and the Rec Department's consultant to mediate, mitigate, come to terms on a few last technical comments that Fussin' O'Neill had. A Zoom meeting was held on December 3, where Fussin' O'Neill, Sarah Hecker, Dawn, Andrew, Tim Davis, and Art Eddy, I believe, attended. It was a good meeting. We then received submission number three on December 8. That submission was sent to Fussin' O'Neill, a revised set of plans and some documents. It was also forwarded to the planning board. We received Fussin' O'Neill's final comments on December 11, indicating that they had no further comments, that based on the revised plans and documentation received at the time of review, Fussin' O'Neill believes the applicant has addressed the comments and present comments presented in our review letter dated October 15, 2020, and November 30, 2020. That being said, I revised the draft decisions from the last meeting to a set dated December 14. That was submitted to Tim Davis and Art Eddy, as well as the planning board members. That was pretty late this afternoon, so I can tell you that I looked through the plans and it appears that the conditions that were related to lingering technical revisions and such were addressed, so I removed those, as well as the ones that were determined to be removed at the last meeting. Dawn, if it's up to you, we can show the revised draft online for the applicant to see, or I can just mention one or two things specifically that might stand out, and if everyone's in agreement, that would be it.
I'd like to do both.
Okay.
Put them on the screen, but also, we don't have to go over them word for word. So while you're doing that, we'd like to say hi to Tim and Art and Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good news from Fussin' O'Neill.
Great news. We'll take it.
So, when, for every site plan, the planning board submits to the town clerk a decision, decision document. And it consists of a procedural history. Kind of sets the table for what we're talking about. And then it goes into a listing of all the correspondence and pertinent documents for the proposed project. And then this, this draft also talks about the findings, waiver requests, and the decision and the vote of the board. And then there's a list of conditions, relatively standard format that we use to capture the whole site plan, public hearing. Not just the public hearing, but the materials leading up to the vote. So, we have it on the, on the screen. Sarah, are you able to just go from the first page, just so that the public can see what it looks like? So, there's, there's the front page, planning board letterhead, and it talks about the procedural history. Go down through that.
If you note the highlighted, Sarah, stop at the highlights. Go back to the first page. You'll note that the highlights are just still things I'm pointing out. December 7 represents the set of plans in hand this evening that Fussin' O'Neill reviewed and essentially signed off with, with their review comments.
So, that number shouldn't change unless this meeting leads to the revelation of a newer plan or a decision to create a newer plan.
Correct.
Okay, keep going.
There's a note here at the end of Section 8, additional documents to be added. In order to get these out this afternoon, I started working on the list. There's still some more to be added under eight and nine. So, that's just administrative information, stuff received during permitting, documents, materials. So, that'll be updated before we file it with the town clerk.
Okay. And the section on the findings, this is more. Oh, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, it's standard language. One, number one, just identifies the project in more detail. Number two, talks about any other permits, and then the rest is standard language.
Keep going.
This is followed by the waiver requests. And there's one question there, the very last waiver on this set of plans. I don't believe that there is light trespass, but this waiver was already voted and granted. So, we could leave that in here, if the planning board wishes to leave that in.
I'm fine with leaving it in. Rest of the board? Mr. Mills? You there, Andrew?
Andrew, you're muted. And maybe he can't hear us. Yeah, he's. Can you unmute yourself, Andrew? At the bottom left screen? Hit your microphone button? Can you hear us? There you go. Okay.
I know what was going on, but yes, I agree.
Mr. Stein?
Yep, it's fine.
Mrs. Latrell?
Um, I voted against the waiver, but I just have one question on the lighting plans. The plans we reviewed were dated November 6, and the new ones are dated October 23, and they show not much, but a little bit more light trespass than what we reviewed at our last meeting.
Go over those dates again, Mimi?
The one, the last meeting, the plans were dated November 6, and these are dated October 23?
Yes, they are dated earlier. I did contact Tim Davis, who spoke with Art Eddy, and although they're a slightly earlier date, they are the current information with the lighting, the foot candles at zero grade, as opposed to three feet above grade. So, I don't believe they showed any foot candles into the properties. Are you saying you saw that on the plan?
So, at the property line, there was slightly increased light trespass. And they, so they, it zeros up, up in, into the front yards, but it did, the other plans did too. This is just slightly increased from the last plan, and just thought the board should be aware of that.
So, previously, it was, I believe it was .02 and .04 for
verticals. So, it's like .03 and .05?
Which is essentially the same. I didn't.
I don't, I think because we've already voted on it, the technical part of it is done. It's which plan? Which plan is the plan that we're going to vote on? Which plan is part of the package?
The current plan is the one with, that has the Musco lighting plans dated 16 November 20 and 20 October 20. So, Mimi, are you look, are you looking at the, the majority of the set was dated 16 November 20? And then I believe the last page was 20 October 20. So, perhaps you can launch.
It was page 11 out of the packet, the max vertical foot candles that I'm referring.
If I can just chime in, the last page was the, the reason it was dated November 6 was it was the aging aiming summary, which was an additional, was going back two meetings, or one meeting was the one that we added.
Well, well, I'm sorry, I need to look at the plan real quick. I just took. So, I'm just going to the plan quickly.
Well, number seven of the procedural history lists Musco lighting plans dated 16 November and 20 October.
Yeah, that's. So, are we on Mooney? Maybe that's the problem. Hold on a second. I'm sorry. So, the Mooney. Oh. Oh, so those are October 23, 20. So, Art and Mike Berry, if I'm not mistaken, the plans for submission three that Fussin' O'Neill reviewed were 23 October 20, with the last page of the lighting plans 06 November 20.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and then let me just check the nearie, because perhaps I just accidentally mixed that up this evening, and I don't want to cause that problem. So, let me just open the nearie plan, and if I go down to the lighting plans and just, I just want to double check what I had here. Yeah, so I will fix that. The Mooney plan is actually supposed to be referenced in number seven, and I'm glad you caught that, Mimi. So, it should be stated 20, so instead of Musco lighting plans dated 16 November 20, it should say Musco lighting plans dated 23 October 20, and the last page, which is 06 November 20 in number seven, the second to last line. And then it's the nearie lighting plan that I accidentally interjected into that.
Cover sheet for that entire field lighting is dated September 3. This was FYI.
Okay, let me look here. Hold on. What is going on? The cover sheet for the lighting.
Yes, so the first couple of pages are all listed as September 3. Two, zero.
Not waiting. No, we have them in the bottom left corner, the 23 October 20.
I'm looking on the Dropbox that.
Yeah, I am, and that's what I'm looking at. The Mooney project, submission number three. Plan set submission number three.
Mooney field lighting plan set sub number three.
Yep, and I'm on page number eight.
Right, I'm saying the cover sheet for that entire packet is dated September 3. So, if you look at one through seven and you scroll through all those sheets, those are all dated September 3.
Yes, with the revision date December 7. Look right below it. So, we usually say, like we said in there, it says, number seven says the application was accompanied by plans, Mooney Baseball, since dated September 3, 2020, and revised through December 7. So, that's the cover sheet reference. So, so that's what we call the plan, and then I referenced the lighting plan specifically with the date of the lighting plans. But it's included in this set, if you look at numbers under procedural history, number seven. Does that make sense? Does anybody else, is anybody else unclear? I accidentally transpose the numbers from nearie lighting dates onto this. And I probably have the Mooney date on the nearie plans, but that's just my error from typing them. Yeah, that's what I did. I just transposed the two numbers when I was typing today. Okay, so what I want to just quickly do is zoom into the foot candles and just see what Mimi was saying. Because I see .01 and .02 in the street. And I see in talking about maximum vertical foot candles at zero feet above grade. Yeah, the range is .01, .03, .05, and previously it was .02 and .04, maybe. But that's very small difference. That's what you were pointing out, right, Mimi?
Yeah, I just want the board to be aware that the plans that they viewed and voted on the waiver for are different.
Are slightly different, a hundredth, a hundredth different. So, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but the statement that says plans show less than 1% of light trespass, that is still correct, is it not?
Yes, less than 1%, yes. For sure.
All right.
So, the vote of the board, does the board feel that the vote that we took on those other plans versus the plans that we have now is essentially the same? I do.
I do.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
This is Houlihan.
Yes.
Okay, and then.
Also note that Fussin' O'Neill looked at those plans too, the ones, the newest plans.
Okay, so back to the original question. We went down the line, and Mrs. Houlihan, are you okay with leaving?
Absolutely.
Okay. Move on to the next, move further down then.
Sorry about that, Dawn.
Sarah?
Okay, if you see here, we're just mimicking in the decision, December 14. That's tonight's planning board meeting. And once the vote is had, we'll update the, the vote, the 000 to however it was voted. And the second paragraph is a reiteration of the I, item seven under procedural. So, I'll be fixing the typo there for the Musco lighting dates that says October 20 and November 6. I'll be repairing that. I carried the same mistake down.
Hold on. Karina?
Yeah.
The decision of the board, second paragraph. You have the right dates there.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the second paragraph down. So, you have the decision of the board at its meeting on December 14, 2020? That's correct. But if you go to the second one?
Yeah, the next paragraph.
Oh, really? I have the right one there?
23, well, it says oot, but it's October.
I remember, I know what I did now. I was copying one, and I probably had nearie open at the same time, and I grabbed it from the wrong page. So, yes.
Just got to fix oot to October.
Typo. Yeah, got it. Sorry about that.
Keep moving. Conditions, one through 15, we have, number six is highlighted.
Six is highlighted. I can say that on the pre, on the, at the last planning board meeting, Mimi had a comment on the tennis courts regarding landscaping, because there was some landscaping added as a buffer per conservation requirements. So, we added that note there, and I felt that because there were three trees proposed here on the Mooney project, that the same two standard conditions would apply. So, I just added the standard number six about landscaping shall be in conformance with the plans and be maintained, and any trees damaged during the project or that die within one year affected by, you know, that are in close proximity to the trees. That was the number seven.
Okay.
Then number 10, we typically, in the past, have required three sets of final approved plans, but we're finding we always have an extra plan, so we changed that from three to two. It helps save costs, reduce paper, and we have an electronic set that will have, that's endorsed by the planning board at that point as well.
Okay.
Keep going, Sarah. And then number 16, I just have highlighted to confirm that we still want to include this attention to the order selectments poll hearings for the utility polls. We left it in prior ones, didn't know if you wanted to leave it in here. It's a requirement either way, whether we put it in or not.
I think I should leave it.
Okay. Anybody else object? Okay, and then once you vote, I will update the vote.
And then you can see at the, right there, the chairman signs it, and then it gets over to the town clerk, and that starts the 20-day appeal period once he stamps it.
Yeah, and after which, if there's no appeal, the town clerk attests that there was no appeal and signs and dates the bottom. And then the applicant can pick up an attested copy after the 20-day appeal period.
Any questions or comments from the board? Because then we're going to go to Tim and his team. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing none, Tim?
Everything looks great. Karina sent this over, had time to review it. You know, everything's great. I thank you all for the additional help and work with Fussin' O'Neill last week. That was the icing on the cake, getting everything cleared up. So, I think we're, I think we're all on the same page right now, moving forward.
And can we hear from Art and Mike?
Yep, we're good.
I'm good.
Open it up to the public. Any questions or comments from the public?
I do not see any hands raised at the moment. Nope, we have 24 attendees currently. No hands raised.
So, what would happen is if everyone else, or if no one else has any questions or comments, and the record now shows that we've gone, gone over the decision document that makes references to plans and other documents, if everyone's good with that, and there's no more information to be received, then the, the next step would be for the board to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. If that passes, then it would move to a motion to approve the project subject to the conditions and, and the things that we said here tonight. So, any more, any questions or comments from anybody? Public? Family members, dogs, any, was there any dogs tonight? No dogs?
I'm sure.
I'm sure likely. I don't see any hands raised, though.
Mr. Mills.
I can motion we approve, close the public hearing for sixty Richards Road, Mooney Field Baseball Field. Major site plan approval.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion to close the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Mills.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the sixty Richards Road, Mooney Baseball Field, major site plan approval with conditions as reviewed this evening.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, any, anyone comfortable with the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Project's approved. We want to thank you, Tim, for working so well with the town planner. And, you know, getting your arms around this and, and having it over the goal line. And certainly wish and hope that the kids playing under these lights will have many years of good fun.
Absolutely. Again, I'll, I'll reiterate, if I can just thank Karina and Sarah for all the help as well. It's been excellent over the last couple of months.
Oh, thanks. Likewise. Appreciate it.
So what will happen, this document will get, get cleaned up and sent to no, and given to me to sign.
Yep.
The final cleanup document, we'll go to you, Tim, for, for any last questions or comments, but otherwise probably later this week, I will be signing this and it will be submitted to the town clerk.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public hearing for fifty-three Parkerville Road, Richardson Tennis Courts, major site plan approval. I'm in a butter, so I will turn the chair over to Mr. Mills and Mrs. Houlihan.
I'm also a butter, so I will be recusing myself.
Great. All right, so this is the public hearing for fifty-three Richards Road, the Richardson, the Richardson Tennis Courts continued from October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, November second, two thousand and twenty, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, and November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. So Karina, can you give an update similar to, as you did on the baseball field? Where we are after we had the discussion last week with Fosse O'Neill and the update from Fosse O'Neill on their most recent plans?
Absolutely. So at the last planning board meeting, November thirtieth, the planning, the public hearing was continued to this evening, twelve fourteen, December fourteenth via an extension request. During that meeting, it was requested that a Zoom meeting be held between Fosse O'Neill and the applicants and planning to mitigate some final technical review comments that had not been clarified. The meeting, Zoom meeting was held on December third, third with Fosse O'Neill in attendance, Amy Bell and Samantha Godin, Sarah Hecker, Don Morris, Andrew, you were there, Andrew Mills, Tim Davis, and Art Eddy with Travers. It was a good meeting and it culminated in revisions to plans that were submitted on December eighth. This was submission number three. That submission was sent to Fosse O'Neill for a final review as well to planning board for their review. We received final comments from Fosse O'Neill on December eleventh, which indicated let me just find the letter here, which indicated that it was dated December eleventh, two thousand and twenty, based on revised plans and documentations received at the time of review. Fosse O'Neill believes the applicant has addressed the comments presented in our review letters dated October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, and November twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Any revisions to the plans and documentation will need further review. Please feel free to contact us with any questions. In essence, that's the final review unless anything gets changed. Based on that information, I proceeded to revise the draft decision from November twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth it was, to a December fourteenth version. That was the revised, was sent to Tim Davis and Art Eddy, as well as the planning board members for review this evening. And Sarah has just put the document, the draft document up in the screen. And Andrew, if you would like, we could go through the highlighted portions and explain the decision.
Yeah, that would be great. Let's do it similar to what we did in the last, for the baseball field, I think.
So this is the December fourteenth draft decision for the Richardson Tennis Courts Athletic Field Lighting Near East School at fifty-three Parker Road. You can see the procedural history. That hasn't changed. It just talks about the project, the owners, et cetera. The applicant, the meetings. If we go down to number seven, here it's reflected, December seventh is the current revision date of the plans. You'll note at the bottom, I do have the issue here with the Moscow lighting plans dated twenty-three October twenty. I will revise those dates to reflect the true dates, which are sixteen November twenty and twenty October twenty as referenced in the current submission three lighting plans. That was just a typo on my part this afternoon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Then if you continue down to number eight, you'll see this again, number, sections eight and nine, I just have to, Sarah and I just have to address additional materials here that we received during permitting. That's more of an administrative task, so that doesn't really have bearing on the decision. That we'll update that. If you continue, you'll see the findings, which in the beginnings described the project a little bit and the other permits, and then there's standard language throughout the rest of those comments down through number seven. Then you get to the waiver requests. Keep going, Sarah. Those waivers were granted at the last planning board public hearing on the thirtieth. So those, there's no changes to those. Then we come to the decision and the vote of the board, and that reflects that at the meeting on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, which is tonight. Once the vote is taken tomorrow, we'll update this. It's indicated that Don Morris and Marty Houlihan recused as a butters. And if you go to the second paragraph here, again, it reflects the December seventh current date, revision date of the plans that will be approved, hopefully. And again, my typo in the last, second to last line of the dates for the Moscow lighting will up, be updated to sixteen November twenty and twenty October twenty. And again, those plans were reviewed by Fosse O'Neill. That takes us down to the special, subject to the following conditions. Conditions one, two, three, four, and five are similar to, the same as last public hearing. Here I added number six and seven pertaining to the landscaping that was requested by Mimi Luttrell at the last planning board meeting. If you go down and you look through eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we have fifteen highlighted because it was a question whether to leave that in and previous project for Mooney decided to leave that in. I would imagine you'd do the same for this one, Andrew?
Yeah. I'd be comfortable with that.
Okay, does any board member object to that? No. Okay. And then you'll see, once the vote is taken, this section will be updated as well. You'll note that after the vote, that the decision will lapse one year from the date of issuance if substantial use has not been, has not commenced. So the project has a year to start, but I'm sure that they're ready to go as soon as they can. And then that's followed by the section where well, we have Don Morris signing here. So he is recused, but the vote, I believe, is voted by the planning board members. But he is typically assigned to sign for the planning board that the decision is what the planning board made. So I believe it's appropriate to have his name there. If it's not, it would be changed to the acting chair. But I believe in the past, it's always been Donald Morris regardless of recusals.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. And then that'll be, once that's signed and filed with the town clerk, it starts the twenty day appeal period. And after the twenty day appeal period, if there are no appeals, town clerk signs this and attests that there have been no appeal. At that time, the applicant can pick up a copy and a tested copy for their files.
Great. Thank you, Karina. For Mimi and Jesse, I, I think the, the only topics that really came up on the meeting we had last week with Fosse O'Neill and Muscal and team and Tim was the, the button that would be on the box. I mean, they talked about the box and, and Fosse O'Neill got much more comfortable with the, the timing of the lighting that Tim was gonna have control of that. And then it was based off the, the time of the sun. But I think the only addition was the plant, the plan was with a button to ask for it to be turned on was, was to be added. So I just want to bring you up to speed on that. The majority of that meeting that was the other week was, had to do with baseball field. So with that-
Also, Andrew, just want to quickly point out that Fosse O'Neill did provide an email at one point between the last meeting and now that said the, that the photo cell was not a requirement.
Okay.
Right, that's, that was the understanding.
Thank you. So with that, let's see, I'll open up to the board if there are any questions. Jesse?
Yep, no questions.
Mimi?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Tim and team, anything you guys want to add?
No, I think we're all set. I think same with baseball. I, I appreciated that last, we all did appreciate that meeting with Fosse O'Neill the prior week to get everything ironed out. And we're feeling good. So we're all set.
Excellent. So then, let's see, Sarah, is there anyone from the public that has any comments, questions?
At the moment, I do not see any hands raised. We have twenty attendees, but no hands raised on this.
Okay. So I, I'll give people a second to see if there, anything pops up. So I think we're at the point that if there are, are no more questions, similar to what we did with the baseball field, it would be appropriate then to start, the next phase would be to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for fifty-three Parker Gold Road. And then after that, we take a vote and on the plan with the conditions that were reviewed. Sarah, no more questions? No hands or anything?
I don't see anyone with any hands up.
All right, Jesse?
No questions.
Can, is there a motion?
Oh, sorry, I moved to approve the project at the Richards Tennis Courts.
Just got to close it first.
Yeah, close the public here.
Let's make a motion that we close the public hearing for the tennis courts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, there's been a second. Any discussion? A discussion? All those in favor? Mills, yes?
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Jesse, who we have motion to approve the project for fifty-three-
So moved.
On the second, any discussion? There's no discussion. Mills, yes?
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
There you go. It's now approved. So, Tim, I think, you know, very similar to what we talked about before and what Karina already outlined. They'll doctor up the, the last pieces of the, the conditions. And then that'll get signed sometime this week. Most likely by Don, but if I'm needed, I'll, I'll go in and sign it. So we should be all set. Anything else on this one?
No, no, sounds great. I appreciate it.
Great. Thanks for your participation in this and partnership. I know it took a little longer than some wanted, but I think we all got to where we wanted to be in the end, so. Appreciate it. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Sounds great. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Art.
Happy holidays. Thanks. Bye.
So, that being said, I will peacefully transition the I will peacefully transition the power of chair back to Mr. Morris. I don't know why I got all this water brought to me, but that was nice.
They wanted to be on TV. I mean, isn't that what everyone wants?
Oh, I said not me.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. But the record show that the chair has been returned back to Mr. Morris. Item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is the first opening up the public hearing, so we'll ask, this is ninety-six Mount Vickery Road definitive subdivision plan approval and a separate public hearing, ninety-six Mount Vickery Road lower impact development special permit. Ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
Mr. Morris?
Mr. Mills?
I am going to recuse myself from this public hearing due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Town of Planning Board, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Jim Hegarty, Town Clerk, public hearing notice for the definitive subdivision approval and special permit for lower impact development per sections two, twenty-four dash ten and one seventy-four dash thirteen point two of the Southborough Town Code. And in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one T and eighty-one U, the planning board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearings, shall hold public hearings on Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, for definitive subdivision plan review at seven twenty PM and lower impact development special permit at seven twenty-five PM via remote Zoom meeting. These hearings are to consider applications received from developer Bartolini Properties, nine McNeil Drive, South Borough, Mass. Oh, one, seven, seven, two for subdivision of a seven point six, three, four acre parcel into six single family lots located at now ninety-six Mount Vickery Road, assessors map twenty parcel eighteen. The proposed subdivision is shown on plans entitled Plans for Ruby Estates dated November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, prepared by Bowler Engineering. Copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage, HTTPS, www.southboroughtown.com slash planning board, or in person at the Southborough Townhouse by appointment only. In accordance with the orders issued by the governor during the current state of emergency, this meeting will be held virtually. No in-person attendance by the public. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to HTTPS, go in front slash backslash backslash WWW.SouthboroughTown.com backslash remote meetings. Donald C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Before we turn it over to the proponent, can you list the any correspondence that we've received from other boards?
Sure, I'll just do a quick update. So on November nineteenth, Bowler, on behalf of Bartolini Builders, provided submission number one, application for definitive subdivision and the lid special permit. Let's see, they provided supplemental information to the application as requested on November twenty-fourth, which, at which time it was filed with the town clerk. Legal ads were placed in the newspaper for November thirtieth and December seventh as required for a public hearing to open on December fourteenth. The submission was provided to town departments for review, to the planning board for review, and to Fosse O'Neill for review. to the planning board for review, and to Fussin O'Neil for review. Green cards and mailing receipts for about notifications were received on Thursday prior to this public hearing as required, um, in response to the submission. Well, actually, on November, and December 3rd, uh, Bowler Engineering provided a supplemental, um, to the application and open space boundary plan, uh, which was provided to the planning board and town departments as well as Fussin O'Neil. On December 10th, Fussin O'Neil provided review comments on the plans, which were dated November 19th, 2020, considered submission number one, uh, which brings us to the meeting this evening. So, um, we do have Fussin O'Neil review comments, of which there were.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yes. And that brings us to this evening. We did not receive any, um, comments from town departments. Uh, Sarah, did you receive any comments back?
Uh, we did get a comment from, um, Open Space.
Yes.
There, the Open Space, um, exhibit was, um, submitted, uh, later on. It was left out of the original submission, so, um, they have not had an opportunity to fully rebo, fully review it as a board yet. However, um, the chair did note that, um, there is currently less than 10% uh, open space in the proposal. And, um, she's concerned about that, but is going to be discussing it with her full board um, at their next meeting, which will be prior to the next time this board meets.
Very good. Michael, good evening.
Sorry, good evening.
Welcome back, uh, welcome. Um, could you introduce yourself and your team members?
Uh, so I'm Mike Bartolini, uh, with Bartolini Properties. Uh, I believe my brothers are on here somewhere. Um, and then.
Would you like them promoted?
Um, sure, they can be promoted, that's fine. And then, uh, I'm here with, uh, Bowler Engineering, uh, with, uh, my engineer, Jim Bernardino.
Thank you. Are you going to present the project now?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, I will be. I'll give a brief overview, then, uh, turn it back over to, uh, Michael, if he had any, any additional comments after I'd make my presentation, then ultimately, uh, back to you and your board for, uh, comments and questions.
Will you be, will you be putting documents on the screen? Or is that you, Sarah?
Uh, either way, uh, you, you have the capacity to share if you have those documents. Sometimes it's easier since you're the one who's going through them.
Yeah, I'll do that. I'll be able to point and highlight.
Great, thank you.
Michael, can you also introduce, um, your two brothers?
Uh, yeah, I can't, uh, my brother, uh, Tony is the one with the mask on and my brother Greg is, uh, the one on the right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect, uh, thank you. If you could confirm, you could see, uh, just an overall site area map of the property? Okay, um, I'll start, um, again, for the record, Jim Bernardino with Bowler Engineering. Uh, obviously, we're here tonight to, uh, discuss the definitive subdivision uh, application as well as the, uh, lower impact design, uh, special permit that was filed for the property at 96, um, Mount Vickery Road. Uh, the existing property, uh, just to give a quick overview, is on the south side of, uh, Mount Vickery Road, east of Middle Road, west of, uh, Boswell Lane, and just north of Hidden Meadow Lane as well. Um, the parcel is 7.6 acres plus or minus, uh, highlighted in the, uh, yellow area, uh, on this overall site area map. Uh, presently, there is an existing, uh, vacant residential home on the property, um, which will be, uh, raised during the, um, development of, of this property. Uh, currently, there is a, uh, logging operation on the site. Has been, um, has been historic operations there for numerous years. Um, presently, they're operating with, um, you know, processing of logs, timber, and firewood. Uh, the proposal will be, uh, obviously to raise the existing building, discontinue that use, uh, to allow for the development of, uh, the proposed subdivision as provided to the, uh, board. The, the proposal is to subdivide the 7.6 acre parcel, uh, with a proposed roadway, which is currently, um, being called Lamson Drive. It's approximately 570 feet long, uh, dead end with a cul-de-sac with a, uh, 50-foot turning radius at the end with the right-of-way, uh, being 120 feet. So we have 100 feet of pavement with 120 foot, uh, um, boundary for the property. The proposal is to construct that 570-foot plus or minus roadway, uh, with the 50-foot right-of-way that'll allow for, um, six residential homes that all have a minimum frontage of 150 feet. This is a residence azon, so the requirements will be, uh, to have 150, uh, minimum frontage, a minimum of one acre lot, uh, with setbacks of 35 feet for the front, 25 for the side, and 50 for the rear. Um, the proponent is proposing, uh, a paved driving surface, which is going to be 20-foot width, which meets the, uh, minimum requirements of the design standards from the subdivision control bylaws. Um, part of the development will also include, uh, a handful of, uh, street trees along the perimeter of the proposed roadways, spaced approximately every 40 feet on center. As part of the, um, proposal, um, we are requesting a waiver not to install any sidewalks. Uh, we'll touch base on that momentarily, but, uh, with the Fussin O'Neil peer review, um, they mentioned that, um, within your regulations, there's allowance for this type of roadway not to have, um, sidewalks, so that waiver would not necessarily be required, uh, to be sought. The, the development, um, obviously is connected to Mount Vickery Road, uh, along with, uh, public water, uh, will service the development. Each individual lot will have its own, uh, wastewater, individual wastewater septic system. Uh, we've conducted testings out there and, uh, we have all the percolation data complete. Um, at this point in time, uh, we completed that the first week of December. Um, we've had a number of preliminary soil tests conducted out there. Um, so we were very confident of what we were going to find out there. Uh, soils are, um, suitable for the proposed intended use and disposal of, uh, septic system, uh, septic system waste. Um, I like to touch base on the open space real briefly. It was mentioned, I'm not sure, I believe the correspondence that was just recently received. Um, our open space exhibit that we show, we're proposing a, uh, the 20-foot no-touch zone to remain as undisturbed open space as well as an area, uh, on the back over here. Um, that area exceeds 10% minimum requirements. The actual proposal is, uh, just over 11%, 11 and a half percent open space is proposed for the development. So I just wanted to touch base with that, because I'm sure, um, that'll be getting further review from your board as well as, uh, the commission. Um, likewise, uh, to address potential impacts, uh, with the lower impact design special permit, uh, we prepared a, a comprehensive stormwater evaluation, uh, for the development. Um, the site will be, uh, um, will implement a stormwater collection, conveyance, and treatment system, which will be, uh, comprised of deep-some catch basins, underground pipe that will lead to a, uh, at the rear of the property, a sediment for bay as well as an infiltration basin. Uh, that is designed, uh, for, uh, obviously, uh, to meet minimum water quality standards as well as, um, groundwater recharge and peak rate attenuation for the stormwater storms up to, including the 100-year storm event. Uh, we've also developed a very comprehensive erosion and sediment control plan that outlines, um, very, various aspects of, uh, installations of our sediment erosion control, project sequencing, and the like. So we believe we've addressed, uh, uh, to, to the satisfaction of the reviewers, or we will be with some minor comment revisions. Um, we've addressed the concerns that would be related to construction-related impacts such as erosion control and sediment discharge from the site. Um, as mentioned in the introduction, um, there, uh, we have received peer review from Fussin O'Neil, the 32 plus or minus comments. Um, I've had the opportunity to review those and discuss them with the applicant. Um, we believe most of those are, uh, technical in nature. Um, we, we don't, we are not going to take exception to, uh, most of those, uh, comments. So we'll be working with, uh, the applicant in development of a revised set of plans that will, uh, address the, the comments that are noted in that, um, Fussin O'Neil memo. Uh, the changes that'll be forthcoming, as I mentioned, will be more technical in, in nature, um, more of dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So I do not expect any substantial change to the plans that were, you know, that you've looked at thus far. So, uh, if anything, there'll be very minor site, uh, changes, uh, more with most of them being more technical in nature. Um, we've also, uh, have been in front of the Conservation Commission. Uh, so we are pursuing a notice of intent, uh, to allow for this development, uh, with the commission. We met with them once, um, a week or two ago. Uh, we're still in the process. Their hearing was continued to January. Uh, we received their peer review comments from, uh, their consultants, Lucas Environmental. Again, um, those comments, uh, we're in the process of addressing them. We want to make sure we got everybody's comments in hand before we move forward with, uh, resubmission of documents. Uh, I think, uh, with the Fussin O'Neil comments as well as the feedback from the Conservation Commission as well as the peer reviewer, we have a, uh, a good grasp on a number of items that need to be updated in the plan. So we'll obviously be, um, moving forward with that in the days to come. Um, so we fully expect to have, uh, updated plans to the commission, uh, within, you know, within a week, uh, and, uh, obviously, any other comments that may come out from the board this evening, we'll take that into consideration as well as we develop any updated plans. Um, as I did mention, we are looking at, um, uh, you know, additional permit for the notice of intent. We're also going to be subject to a stormwater permit, uh, from the Conservation Commission, uh, as well as, uh, septic design review from the Board of Health. Lastly, there are a number of waivers that, uh, have been requested uh, from the, uh, LID management plan requirements as well as the subdivision regulations. Uh, just go through those really quickly. Uh, first waiver that we were seeking was from section 244.21 of the subdivision regulations, which is the elimination of, uh, a sidewalk. Uh, in your Fussin O'Neil's review, they did mention that, uh, there's an allowance for this type of road on configuration being minor in nature, that, um, uh, a waiver for the sidewalk would not be required. Uh, we would just defer back to the board on that. If, um, if that is deemed true, we could, we withdraw the waiver. Uh, however, um, we'd just like that to stand, just to make sure that, uh, we do address this topic with the board one way or the other. Um, a second waiver from the subdivision regulations was section 244-26, uh, which is the requirement to install concrete bounds at property corner, uh, changing directions. Uh, the applicant proposes to install iron rebar at the property corner, uh, changes in directions. The concrete bounds will be, uh, installed along the roadway, um, points of tangency and down point, in points of curves as well. So the roadway will be fully bounded by concrete. However, the property lines would be set with, um, iron or steel bar. Um, and there was four waivers requested from the LID management plan. Uh, number one is, uh, the proposed vertical survey datum. Uh, your regulations require 1929 datum. Um, the, the new industry standard is 1988 NAVD 88, uh, vertical datum. Um, so we're being that, we're asking that, uh, the board allow for that uh, industry standard, you know, FEMA has changed over to that. Many of the, uh, local GIs, GIs systems are all, uh, on this newer datum of 1988. Uh, number two, uh, we're seeking a waiver from the, um, creating a contour of maximum, uh, groundwater elevations to, um, across the site. We've conducted a number of test bits throughout the site in the, um, areas of concern for septic systems as well as drainage. Uh, so rather than an interpolated contouring map, uh, we request that we grant a waiver from developing that, uh, map and use, um, site-specific, location-specific, um, soil testing data that, uh, has been obtained. Uh, three is, uh, we're looking for a waiver to provide a water ba, uh, balance calculation, uh, a yearly hydraulic budget of wastewater for pre- and post-development conditions on the site. Um, we're asking a waiver from that. Uh, we are following the guidelines of the DEP stormwater policy. And, um, with the design of that, we're, um, providing an excess of the groundwater recharge, which is required under their regulations. Um, as such, it's presumed that the, um, the approximate groundwater recharges, um, uh, the proposed groundwater recharges, uh, approximate the existing condition. And lastly, uh, there was a request for an emergency response plan. Um, basically, a complete emergency response plan with a profile of events that could adversely affect the groundwater or surface waters. Uh, we provided that for a long-term, um, aspect. However, we did not provide that, uh, for a construction-related item. Um, we would, uh, withdraw that application based upon the review of the, um, consultants, Fussin O'Neil's comments on this. Uh, they do recommend that it be incorporated, uh, into the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which, um, the applicant is willing to do. Obviously, that is generally prepared prior to construction. Um, so the applicant will take no exception to making that part of, uh, a condition of accrual. Uh, with that, that is kind of, uh, a long-winded overview of the project and the waivers that were being sought. Um, I would turn it over to, uh, Mike, if he has anything to add or subtract. Um, if not, we can go over to the board and open up the dialogue for some questions and answers.
Uh, I just had, uh, the Lampsons asked me to say something real quick, so I was just gonna read that real fast. Um, the Lampsons are the ones that own the property for numerous generations. But, um, I just wanted to mention that four generations of Lampsons have lived and continue to live in town, uh, that the Lamson daughters asked for the road to bear the Lamson family name. Um, they are vested, uh, in it and to make sure that the, the development is something that they can be proud of. Um, and that's why they really wanted to work with the Bartolini family. It's a family that has as much history in Southborough as they have. So, that was it.
Thank you, Michael. So, um, I think that concludes our, our presentation on our end. And, Mr. Chair, I turn it back over to you and the board for, um, any questions and answers you may have, or any questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. That was, um, an excellent presentation. We can tell that this isn't the first time you've done that.
Thank you.
So, uh, with, and as you said, the, uh, 32 comments, many of them are, are technical, that you, uh, have already started to, uh, engage in fixing and have declared that you're gonna have a revised set of plans. So, um, we probably won't spend a whole lot of time going over this set of plans, uh, at, at least not into the, the, the details. There's a couple of things I wanted to bring it up, bring up, and then I'll, I'll, um, move it down the, the, uh, the board members. There were, one of the comments had to do with vertical, uh, curve data.
Yes, um, if I may, um, uh, we, we do have, uh, the proposed roadway design has, um, difference, differential slopes, you know, a one percent slope to either, I believe it's a three percent slope. My general rule of thumb is once you get over two, two percent deflection differential, you generally need to do the vertical curve. But we're not going to take any exception. Our revised plan will show a short vertical curve to transition from the slope changes on the proposed profile. So basically, we're going to be introducing a minimum of a fifty-foot curve. I think we may go down to a forty-foot curve at the entrance of the road because we're just slightly coming up for a very small area at the intersection with Mount Vickery Road. So that was a long way of saying, yes, we will introduce vertical curves.
That's good, because I think that's one of the things for residential subdivision roads the board has been consistently requiring. There was a comment late today from one of the neighbors requesting planting of dense trees between his property and the proposed houses. I believe his address was number seventy? Mount Vickery. It's Mr. Jesus. Is that right, Karina?
He's one seventy.
One seventy. Can you show us on the map where he lives? One seventy.
Are you asking us, Don, or are you asking Mike Bartolini?
I'm asking the proponent. Yeah, I mean, that's probably that first slide showed the locus. And we can all see where he's talking about and if his request is, can be granted.
One seventy, I'm not sure. One seventy. Which was, Mike, do you know which one it is off the top?
I think he's on Middle Road, but I think you're talking, it's either one seventy or one seventy-two. I don't know. I don't have that.
Just commented she's at one seventy.
Okay, one seventy, Middle Road? I'm assuming everybody sees my Google Earth, correct?
Yeah, sorry, Don, I stepped away. This is in reference to the email that I forwarded from in a butter at one seventy.
Yes.
Middle Road, yes. There was also two others that I'll mention when we're done with this one.
Okay, so one seventy, Middle Road. Down through this area.
You don't have to answer tonight, but I want to make sure you understand.
I'm just highlighting, so this is the one seventy that we're talking about right here. And probably be looking for some sort of dense plantings in this area down in here. I can speak with the applicant on that. I know that he does plan on implementing, you know, comprehensive landscaping for each of his lots, you know, as he goes along to suit his customers. So, you know, his goal is to provide something as aesthetic to his customers as well as to the neighbors. So I think we will be able to speak together with him and come up with something that'll be reasonable to probably all parties.
Very good. Good answer. I'll turn it over to this that, did Aaron want to speak? No.
Um, it looks like she just answered in the chat box that she said, thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mills, questions, comments?
Mr. Mills is recused, so I'm going to take it.
Mr. Stein, sorry.
Why are you seeking a waiver for sidewalks?
Waiver for sidewalks. Presently, obviously, we are a very small, limited development with six lots. A sidewalk is not present in any of the surrounding neighborhoods. So obviously, Mount Vickery Road, the, and the budding streets of Middle Road and the like are not, do not have sidewalks. So we were going to be consistent on that. Also, the construction of sidewalks adds impervious surfaces, and we're trying to minimize that as well as part of the overall drainage and lower impact techniques that we're trying to implement. You know, obviously, that, you know, sidewalks do provide a benefit in certain, in certain circumstances. We don't think it will in this case, just due to the fact of the small neighborhood. It's only going to be six residential lots. And then the surrounding neighborhood, which does not have any sidewalks in itself as well. And I'd just like to reiterate Fussin O'Neil's comment in their review letter, you know, mentioned that we requested the waiver. And that under the regulations, under the definition of the road classifications that we would fall under, the design standards do not require a sidewalk there. However, when you read the regulations, it says a sidewalk is required. So we, out of just being very cautious to make sure we have the i's dotted and the t's crossed, we requested the waiver from the board.
Why are you requesting a waiver for granite or concrete monuments to be established in any of the point of intersection subdivision boundaries?
Well, generally, we find with the residential property corners themselves, over time, they generally get backfilled with lawn, loam, and concrete generally is not detectable when future surveys are, you know, are provided. So when you're able to install a pin, they also get buried at certain times over years. You know, you won't believe how much leaf debris, grass debris and the like cover these types of things. So in the future, when they're out there looking for those types of monuments for additional surveys, they easily get picked up by metal detectors. And generally, when you're along the roadway, it's easy to tape out and determine, you know, where the bounds are, the granite, the concrete bounds in the street. So we're proposing that in the roadway and then the metal rods within the angle points for each individual lot.
What's the timeframe for getting through the Board of Health for the septic systems?
Timeline, we have not, we have all our, we have all of our testing done and complete. We've identified locations on the plans. So we are ready to move forward with the comprehensive designs on that. However, we want to get through some of these initial meetings with your board, as well as the Conservation Commission, to see if there was anything that would be, you know, consequential to the development of the septic plants. So once we get a little, you know, better feeling after this evening, we're probably going to start commencing of the designs on that. And then we move forward with permitting those individually with the Board of Health. I'll have to talk with the applicant about how he wants to proceed with that. Obviously, he's not going to go into the property and clear cut the site. He's going to, you know, work on one lot at a time, so he may permit one septic system at a time as well. But long story short, there's no definitive timeline as to when we're going to get all those permits. But obviously, we're aware that they are required, and we would be obviously seeking those at the appropriate times before, you know, construction begins.
I'm a little bit of a disadvantage right at this second because I have not had a chance to review the memorandum from the Open Space Commission. But when there's a discrepancy with the Open Space Commission, my standard practice as a planning board member is to request the proponent reconcile it to the satisfaction of the Open Space Commission, generally speaking. And I do see in the Fussin O'Neil comments, comment number twenty-two, the as shown on the open space exhibited, the applicant is proposing a twenty-foot setback from the wetland areas as open space area to meet the open space requirements for the project. In addition, that applicant has stated in the LID management plan that no work is proposed than a twenty-foot of the wetland area per section two four four dash fourteen B. Open spaces to remain natural and undeveloped. The proposed riprap must not be located with the, within the open space area. Please review and revise accordingly. So I raise that as a possible, you know, that might be part of the discrepancy. It might not. I don't know yet. But
Yeah, just to add up, add on to that if I may. You know, we will, we have taken a look, and we're going to be able to pull that riprap out of that twenty-foot area. So there will be no disruption within that twenty-foot setback of the resource areas. It's kind of an engineering practice that I like to do is to extend stabilization to the edge of the resource area. But I do understand the requirements locally. So we'll be able to pull that riprap back and have no alteration within that twenty-foot setback to the resource area.
Thank you. That's it for me for now.
Thanks, Jesse. Mrs. Latrell.
Good evening. So the, the open space does not meet the ten percent, the open space, you remove the wetlands, the square footage of the wetlands from the site and then figure the ten percent on that, which is incorrect per two four four fourteen B, certain portions of each lot equal to no less than ten percent of the gross area of the subdivision shall be set aside under covenant not to be developed and to remain open space. So that, that's where the discrepancy is. My other question, you have proposed red maples for street trees, and they're salt sensitive, so they're not good street trees. And the open space supplemental plan is at a different scale than all the other plans. So one inch equals fifty feet instead of one inch equals forty? And are there any large trees on the site? Because there are none shown on the plans.
Just to respond to some of the questions that you have, we will reevaluate the open space calculations and update accordingly. Likewise, we'll just make sure that we have consistent scale plans, so they, they match up exactly with the other sheets within the set. That's not going to be an issue. We'll take a look at alternatives to the red maple. That'll be a little more salt tolerant. We'll work with the applicant to get those implemented into the site plans. As far as a substantial
James, this is Karina Quintown Planner. I just want to point out that the town has a street tree guideline that gives some examples of possible selections that you might find helpful, and it's on the Planning Board website. Yeah, if you can't find it there, give me a call and I'll show you where it is.
Thank you. And as far as substantial trees on the site, we have not gone out and identified individual tree locations on the project. There are some relatively larger pine trees that are on the site. Many of aren't in the greatest shape, but we have not gone out to identify each of the individual trees over, on the overall parcel. It's primarily wooded. That was some of the comments that was brought forth, not only in Fussin O'Neil's comment letter, but the Conservation Commission wanted to see that as well. So we'll be identifying the existing, as well as the proposed tree line as, as it would result from the proposal that's in front of everybody today.
Is there a stream or a brook on the site?
Yes, there is.
And that's not identified on the plans either?
Yes, they are. If I may, I'll share my screen again to identify that where it is. So here we are here. Obviously, we have the bordering vegetated wetland that runs the entire side of the property. That's noted boundary vegetated wetland. As it goes down, once it gets to a certain point down here, the orange line notes it as boundary of bank, which is a brook. The resource area is called a bank. So associated with the bank is intermittent brook that runs down the middle of this. It's actually labeled stream in here. So we have identified that. And actually, received a notice of resource area delineation from the Conservation Commission. They've confirmed the limits of the resource areas on the site. That was our first process that we took with the, with the Conservation Commission. Once they confirm that, we formalized our plans and designs and we submitted to the town.
Okay. Sorry, my, my mistake.
No, no, that's not a problem. There's a lot in these things, a lot in the plans.
Oh, and I just, when you were highlighting where you, where trees would go to screen the property of the butter, just to note, they can't go in the no-touch where you highlighted. Which LID lid techniques are going to be utilized? Rain gardens, buffer strips, vegetated open channels?
Well, we're obviously, we have noticed our buffer strip that we're, you know, maintaining along the edge of the property. We've introduced the infiltration associated with the overall stormwater guidelines for the, for the overall development. We're, you know, collecting in catch basins and rather than using proprietary treatments such as storm scepters or the like, we are utilizing a seven-four bay and then in line with an infiltration basin. Both meet or exceed the water quality in groundwater recharge requirements of the stormwater policy.
And I watched the December third Conservation Commission meeting, and the Conservation Commissioners were very concerned that the wetland buffer, almost none of it was being preserved. And there was a comment made that the, that the reason it wasn't was because a less impactful plan was brought before the planning board that met the bylaw. But the planning board said they preferred the conventional plan. So just to set the record straight, the flex plan, which is a special permit that allows for reduced front to do setbacks, et cetera, in exchange for an increased percentage of open space, the plans presented did not meet the requirements of the bylaw for the open space in both percentage and the intent of the open space portion of the bylaw. Oh, and my last question is, what is the square footage of the upwind on each lot?
We have not calculated the square footage of the upwind, though. It does exceed twenty thousand square feet for each lot. I don't have the exact number for each.
Can that be shown on future plans?
Yes, it can.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Houlihan.
Yes, my colleagues have covered quite a bit our territory. I just one comment. So Mr. Bernardino, you had mentioned that the applicants plan to file landscaping plans for each site to customize. It's typically our, is, was that, did I misunderstand that?
It was not the intent to file. It would be implement landscaping on each. He does do, you're probably very familiar with his projects throughout the town. So obviously, he wants to make it very marketable and Um, so obviously, he he wants to make it a very marketable and desirable neighborhood. So he is going to enhance each of the lots with landscaping. Uh, however, the intent is to implement it, but a a formal plan um is not proposed at this time.
Um, so I think we like to see the a larger plan of a landscaping um approach. So are you are you um not intending to provide any landscaping plan for us to review for this property?
Um, the intent was to provide what was required on the subdivision regulations, which uh ultimately is just a requirement of the street trees along the frontage. Uh, obviously, the intent is to go be above and beyond that. Uh, but at this time, um, you know, there there's no formal plan for the the lots uh on an individual basis. So um, right now, the the only proposal would be to, you know, for the minimum requirements of the street trees.
Okay, thank you. All for me.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I guess we can open it up to the public based on the.
Don't just one quick thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to point out, because I do see attendees there. I don't want them to feel like we didn't receive their information. Uh, on uh November 24th at 2:00 PM, we received an email from Jason Kurtz, uh 168 Middle Road. Concerned about the proposed development. I don't know if you want me to read the email or if you would give him the opportunity to speak for himself as he is in the attendees. And then I also, yeah, and then secondly, and I believe this person is also in the attendees, is Thomas Okamazo, 96 Mount Vick, uh uh 88 Mount Vickery, um resident. Uh, he also had uh some concerns. And possibly support based on some notes I have, but he may also want to speak for himself. But I did receive those two additional butter uh input.
Thank you. So let's open it up to the attendees, to the to the public and see what they they have, any questions or comments?
Okay, we do have a hand raised. Jason Kurtz, hope I'm not getting your last team two wrong. Are you all set to speak?
Uh, you can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Uh, so I just had a few like uh little idiosyncrasies. I just wanted to get some clarification on. Um, a lot of uh the, you know, you have six lots allocated. Uh, looking at the the cut fill, you know, PDF that you have, um, you basically plateau the lot and do so so that there's a steep drop off that runs towards the middle roadside of the project. It it appears, you know, it 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 kind of you create like kind of like a a high point and it and it splits sort of evenly, but that means that there's going to be a lot of um anticipated water runoff heading towards the middle roadside of things. And seeing as you already have the wetlands over there and it already floods our like property a little bit when we get really heavy rains in the in the back of our properties. Um, you know, we're obviously a little bit concerned about some of the the water control methods. Uh, you mentioned that there's, you know, there's the stream that, you know, is really down towards the uh at least southern portion of the page, but the what you called out is the wetlands line, that solid green line, it really kind of delineates where there's a there's a solid stream there that is a running body of water anytime it rains, you know, and I don't know if that really constitutes a stream or you know, some kind of uh secondary body of water for the the planning board when they're considering these things, but there there is like running water through that area and it's not called out. And that does like cause a little bit of concern about our property taking on additional water with all this additional hard surface and not just hard surface, but hard surface that is going to send all the water down to the uh wetlands and while it's down towards supposedly, I guess, the little bit lower elevation of the wetlands. Yeah, the water has to go somewhere, so it most likely is going to increase the level of the water table just based upon six hard, you know, hard surface buildings, all the roadway that goes with it. Um, you know, you mentioned on page, uh, it looks like it's PDF eight uh eight dash 96. Um, the mentions about the post-development controls, you know, you you have nearly seven, $8,000 worth of uh anticipated controls. I don't know if that's being automatically built into the developments uh assessment that they have to pay to make sure that every year they pay in this amount of money to sweep four times for a thousand dollars and, you know, you know, spend several thousand dollars cleaning the basins yearly so that all of your systems that you're building in that are supposed to control the water work properly and you don't have to rely only on your overflow uh basins that you're creating. Um, you know, on your your cut fill uh stuff, like it showed that you started out with over five acres of forested property and you end up with 0.9 acres of forested property. That's like a 17% forested after you're done. I mean, like that, that to me is clear cutting. I I could be completely wrong. But if you go with, we clear out 83% of the property or 83% of the property is cleared that was forested, I don't see how you can call that not clear cutting. Um. I just, I'm I'm just really struggling with looking at these plans. Hearing the earlier arguments um from Mr. Bartolini talking about how you guys apparently had met uh with the planning board and had talked about a couple of different, you know, layouts. And this is the preferred layout supposedly from the planning board in the meeting from the conservation that is the more aggressive plan, which tries to put, tries to like shoehorn six lots onto a parcel of land that a lot of it is wetlands and isn't buildable. So it's really not really six buildable lots based on, you know, the overall square footage. You know, there's only one lot out of the six that didn't have to go in front of uh any kind of review from conservation, simply because it's the only lot that didn't come in touch with the 100 foot buffer. You have the lot number one is 47 foot from the wetlands and that's only 27, 25 foot, whatever it is, from the like the no touch zone. Then you have lot number two, which is even closer. Lot number three is a little bit further away, but the first three lots are not just like kind of in the 100 foot buffer zone, they're like submerged in it. The first two don't even, I don't even think they expose outside of the 100 foot zone. So I'm just, I'm just really confused how the the planning board, because you know, uh, maybe I'm coming on to this late. I never saw any or heard anything from them speaking with the planning board about this project would suggest a proposed project that is essentially shoehorning so many project or so many properties inside of this wetland area and doing so without like really taking into consideration some of these setbacks that they're 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 not locked in stone, but they are strong suggestions and a lot of it is based on water control, wildlife and vegetation. And our town is really like a very, you know, uh, you know, conservation type of town. And so that, those are like the arguments that I really am making right now. And that's what the letter was really about is the 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 fact that so many of these properties, you you know, I I really believe that if this was re reapproach, you could come up with a way to fit lots onto this, make it into a development. I'm not opposed to people, you know, taking their profession, building homes for people. But I just don't think that the the approach was done with the intent of trying to utilize the 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 resources and and it was done in a in an attempt to essentially try to maximize most profits, which I understand. But I don't think that it's at the best for the town. And and that that's that's pretty much where I'm at. So um, you can, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. I'd like to go back to Mrs. Latrell. And could you go back to the uh your statements and your uh feelings about the original meeting between the proponent and the planning board and how that evolved into the uh the plan that we have now?
Um, sure. So um self-pro zoning code allows for a flexible development, which allows for um reduction in lot sizes, frontages, setbacks in exchange for um set percentages of open space. So the proponent came before the planning board, submitted plans, the same number of lots, um, still most of the uh building in the uh 100 foot wetland setback. But they they did take advantage of the reduced frontages and setbacks, but they did not provide the required open space, nor was the open space provided in a cohesive way, which is uh a requirement of the bylaw. So what they proposed did not meet the requirements of the bylaw. And did not save the the setback, the wetland setback either.
And thank, thank you. Karina, the uh the video of that Zoom meeting is available online, right?
Yes.
You you, okay, so if the neighbor.
Uh, virtual meetings, previously recorded meetings, all previously recorded meetings for the town are on um in a clearinghouse on YouTube.
So if the neighbors want to see uh uh essentially what was presented uh and not fully complying with the flexible development led to the uh, I guess, the declaration by the proponent that he was just going to build a contemporary uh subdivision. I think if you look at the uh the video and listen to it, you'll see that the board was certainly not uh preferring a conventional subdivision.
There were actually two discussion, there were two meetings that there were discussions for this uh flexible concepts that Michael Bartolini uh submitted for discussion. I believe it was uh July timeframe. Uh, but it was relatively recently. Um, the first one where he came in with the idea of this the subdivision um as a requirement to have a preliminary discussion with the planning board based on the flexible development requirements when you come in with a flexible. And the planning board said, well, um, you know, you need to scale the plans the same because the scales were a little bit off, so you couldn't really compare conventional with um the open space plan that was provided. So um, Michael came back with um uh actually, the conventional plan with three flex development concepts. Um, one showed, I think, 12%, one was 25% or 18, and then one was a another higher percent or 35%. And the 35% flexible concept showed the um the open space boundary very close to the back of the houses, uh if I recall. But yes, um, the public can go back to those. Specifically, the second meeting is where those concepts were presented, if they want to take a look at um what those meant. And I do think it was July, but if anyone has a question, they can call the planning office and we can point them directly to those meetings and where to find them.
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, if I just may want to add just real quick on that, obviously, um, Mr. Bartolini, you know, was seriously considering the flexible development. Um, hence, you know, the preliminary meetings with the board. Uh, we understand that you know, there was no approval or denial or or anything of the like um with those preliminary meetings. It was just a understanding that um in the feedback that we received was taken that the flexible development that would be um possible was not really not necessarily acceptable, but wasn't desirable at the board at the time of those presentations. So, you know, after those discussions, um Bartoli's properties ultimately decided to uh pursue the the conventional subdivision plan, um, you know, obviously, under the, under the local regulations.
Is there, thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments from the public?
Yes, we do have, um, we do have one more uh person wishing to speak on this. And also, I just took a quick look in reviewing um the dates of those meetings. Uh, they were August 10th and September 14th. Um, and so the proposed um at the time, uh, the proposed layout uh was uh presented in the public packet, so that's accessible online um under uh meetings, uh the agendas. And then um the uh recording is also posted under uh previously recorded meetings. Um, so now I will allow Alex to speak. Alex, are you with us?
I think you can even look back at the news and announcements and see the public hearing um plans, although that wasn't a public hearing, but it would be in the planning board packet.
With the public packet, so that those documents are with the public packet, they're also listed as documents used. So they're posted with uh the meeting minutes as well. So all that material is definitely accessible. Um, and if, again, if you have any questions, you can call the department. Alex Yalseth?
Are you able to hear me now?
Oh, yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. So my question is really kind of regarding the actual construction and impact. So.
Alex, can you please identify your last name and your address?
Sure, Rickard, 97 Mount Vickery Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my question was on the plans. It indicates that some of the utility poles are going to be moved and it's going to be coordinated. So given kind of the current work conditions, would that be done at a conducive time so that all the folk, well, not all the folks or a majority of folks are working from home would not have an impact that we could continue to work? I don't know if that would be a, you know, outage for all those, you know, power outage for all those residents on Mount Vickery Road, but would that, how would that be coordinated?
All right, um, i- i- if I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Um, o- obviously, uh, the utility pole relocation is going to be subject to the utility company provider. I don't recall if it's ever sourced or national grid out here. Um, but what they would do is they would coordinate the pole relocation. Um, generally, they are able to relocate uh all of the overhead wire services without interruption. Uh, that doesn't mean I can't guarantee that the interruption won't happen. Uh, but this is a technique that happens um very often for uh the power companies. Um, so they'll be able to relocate that as well, as well as um all of the telecommunications as well, as well as your phone and cable lines that are on that overhead wire. Uh, they'll come in after the power company and move their um move their wires over to the new pole. Um, generally, in an in in uninterrupted pattern. Um, generally in an, in, in uninterrupted pattern.
Okay. So given our conditions with, you know, COVID and kind of the special exception that would be taken in consideration, it sounds like. So that those of us whose livelihood relies upon our work from home in this condition, it would be, you know, considered. When you guys act, or when the national grid actually moves the line. Is that fair statement?
Um, I, I can't speak for national grid or the power company, uh, regarding that. Um. But I can say generally, general practices, I've, I've seen power services. Um, uninterrupted or if interrupted would be a very short period of time. So, um, unfortunately I cannot commit. Um, or speak on behalf of the techniques that national grids are going to be taking. Only what I've, uh, seen in my past experience.
Oh, no, that's absolutely understood. I was just from the development. Developer perspective, if it would just be held. As a consideration to be, you know, aware of it. And then I guess also would public water at the time, I mean, that would be in my mind less impactful, but would we see a. A shut off of water when you guys bring this online?
Uh, no, the, the ten, connect, the techniques that are used nowadays are. Um, they'll be able to excavate and tap into the existing water service. Uh, without interruption of any of the neighboring services. So the answer is you should not experience any. Um, water service disruptions with the, uh, connection of our proposed water main.
Okay, thanks. That addresses a couple of questions I had.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do not see any additional hands raised at the moment. We have 13 attendees, but no hands raised.
Anyone else, uh, on the board or Mr. Bartolini? Jim? So the current, uh, definitive subdivision. Uh, approval period ends on March 20th. And the lower impact development special permit. Approval period ends on February 26th. So we're able to continue this public hearing. Anticipating revised plans and, um, revisions based on. Not just the comments from tonight, but from what you're going to be getting from, uh, conservation and. Other town departments. So, um. Is it the board's desire to continue this public hearing to? Uh, January 11th, which is our next meeting, since, uh, scheduled meeting?
The second. So moved.
The motion would have to come from a planning board member.
Yes.
I was wondering whose voice that was.
Done. That's, that's moved.
And so that would move, that would, uh, continue the public hearing to. It would be 7:05, Karina?
Correct.
On January.
11th.
And that would be for. The, um. Definitive subdivision. And then the lower impact development. Public hearing would be continued to seven. 10. On the same day. Is that correct?
Correct.
So moved.
So we have, um, is that a combined, um, motion, Mr. Stein?
Yes, it is.
To, to continue both public hearings to those time, uh, times and date.
Yes, please.
Need a second?
Maybe second.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second to continue the public hearings. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes?
Lutrelia?
Sulehan, yes.
Thank you. We'll see you on, uh, uh, January 11th.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item. 20 Turnpike Road, New York Bagel Factory Roof Sign, last the town planner. Or Sarah to, um, whoever's working this, both of you, uh, to give us a, an update on where we are with this. And why we're. Why we're having this discussion.
Uh, sure. So, um. So, uh, last the board spoke about the roof sign. Um, it is a, a sign that's, it has been in existence. Um, for a minimum of eight years. There is reference to the sign. In 2012, um, existing on the landscape. Um, it is part of the town bylaw for the planning board. To issue a memo to the ZBA. The, um, proponent is, um, going to the ZBA for. A, for relief from section 174 dash 11 C 58. Which is the roof sign. Uh, it's embedded in the sign bylaw. Uh, roof signs are not allowed, uh, in town. And so the board at that time, uh, there's, there's minimal, unfortunately, there's, uh, minimal, uh. Records for this particular sign. So at that time, the board, uh, voted to release a memo pending the. Input of town council in regards to. Whether or not the roof sign could exist. Um, in the first place, under a use variance. In having some discussion with, um, the building department. And in seeing the, uh, application to the ZBA, the, um. Applicant is seeking this relief under a structural variance. The, um. ZBA, uh, you know, has said that they will hear it under the structural variance. Uh, that they're not, um, accepting this application, you know, in. And attempting to give it any sort of, uh, use variance. So I just wanted to bring that back to the board. We did not receive, um. A. Legal opinion from town council. Um, since again, the, the building department. Is not in, and the ZBA are not hearing this under. A use variance, which is, has clearly been established, um, in other legal opinions as. Uh, not allowed by the town, but instead seeking under a structural variance. So I just wanted to bring that back to the board's attention, give the board an opportunity. Um, to kind of change the memo or adapt, uh, the memo. Um, that the ZBA is, uh, anticipating. The memo does not have to have, uh, positive. Recognition, uh, for lack of a better word, from this board. Um, you know, it, it could be, you know, kind of a. A negative or a mixed kind of feedback. Um, it's just required, um, through the. Through the bylaw that this board does issue some sort of memo acknowledging. Uh, this particular sign and how they feel about it. So I think that's. The best synapse that I can give, um.
Very good. Thank you. So as you said, we did vote on the five criteria. We did, uh, place that in, in the, uh. Record format with a note at the bottom. Uh, I read the note, uh, and. Think it may need to be, uh, revised a little bit. My feeling is, um, that. We were, we are asked by the code, by the ZBA to submit a report in order for them to. Uh, open the public hearing and, and. And, and deal with the variance request. So we've done the report, but we haven't submitted it. And it would seem to me that, um. If the, if the sign is legal, then there's our report relative to the sign and its future. If the sign is illegal, then the report. Probably goes out the window and the ZBA can. And town council can deal with it accordingly. But as far as requesting, uh. Counsel. It's my feeling that it's more appropriate for the ZBA. To request guidance from town council, more appropriate for them to do that. Than the planning board. So. I think if our note at the bottom reflects that. Uh, I'm, I'm fine with submitting it to the ZBA and they can deal with it how, however they want. Open it up to the board, um, Mr. Mills?
Comfortable with that. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Sorry, can you turn my, uh, camera back on?
Um, I, I cannot do that from here.
Bottom left corner, Andrew.
No, I, I tried doing that and it said that, uh, nevermind. It's okay.
All right, okay. There you are. We saw you for a second.
There you are.
There you go. Um, so yeah, I did amend, uh, you know, the. The bottom, um, you know, the note with the conditions and. Can you see? See everything here. Um, so, um, all members, uh, voted in favor on question one. With the recommendation for the ZBA to seek town council's opinion to determine if the signs roof placement is lawful within. The town.
So I guess I'll ask Mr. Mills, I'll ask the board. Are we okay with the note as written or any, uh, recommendations to? Add, subtract? You want to take a minute? I'll go, I'll bounce, bounce over to Jesse, Mr. Stein.
I. I, I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't say something to the effect that. Given the econ- economic circumstances. Uh, this would be a good time for us to show some leniency to a local business. That's, uh, facing.
Extraordinary challenges.
So. I think in that context, we should do what we can to facilitate, uh. Facilitate this for the proponent. Well, so that would, I guess, suppose in, in, in the, to answer your question directly, I'm fine with it being submitted. That's current form.
Mrs. Luttrell?
Um. I am also sympathetic to the, the current economic conditions. Um, however, I can find. Nowhere, no way in this bylaw that it's allowed and. You know, the bylaws like a foundation, you keep on removing stones and. You know, ignore it here and ignore it there, and it just crumbles and means nothing. And. It's voted on by the legislative body who. And that's what empowers this board is, is that bylaw. So. I don't feel that I can, uh. Ignore it and. And do my duty as an elected, uh, planning board member. Um, as Sarah said, the bylaw says no sign shall be erected on roof. Um, in the sign bylaw. Under 174 11D, it lists out, um. All the dimensional requirements of different signs, a roof sign isn't even listed there. So it seems that it's not intended to be allowed in the bylaw. Um, under special permits, it allows for, um. The extension or alteration of legally non-conforming structures. Um, but this isn't legally non-conforming. It, there's no permits on it whatsoever. It wasn't in existence when. The bylaw was adopted. And then under special permits, it goes on to say, um. That no special permit shall be granted for non, non-conforming signs subject to chapter 93 or 93. D of mass general laws, which, um. Relates to state highways and I'm not sure if, because that's on route nine. That would, it would fall under that. Um. And several years ago, somebody wanted to put up a billboard and. They were required to try and seek a use variance for that. And I've never heard of a structural variance. It's either a use variance or a. Dimensional variance. To me, a structural variance, if you. Uh, want to con- construct a structure that is not allowed in the code, it's a, it's a use variance. So I, I would say that, um. I would amend the report to say that. That the, the board voted in favor of the report. If it's deemed that a roof sign is allowed. Uh, by town code. Not just question one, it was the entire report. And recommends that the ZBA seek counsel. Or, or I don't know if we can even say that, but. So maybe just say that, uh. The board voted in favor of the. Report. Contingent upon roof signs being allowed by code.
Very good. Ms. Sulehan?
Um. Thanks. Uh, I agree with Jesse. I'm sympathetic for business owners, particularly in this business. Um. I think remarkably, uh, when you look at that and then you look across route nine, all of those buildings have roof signs. Um, which is a little disconcerting. Um, however, I'm in complete agreement with Ms. Luttrell as well around what our bylaw is and what it's meant to be. And why our town has voted on that and why they have elected us to make sure that we comply with our. Um, our bylaws. So I. I, Mimi brought it up, but I have, I've never heard of a structural, structural variance. So I was a little surprised to read that response from Sarah from the building. Department. Um, so I looked through our town code. I didn't see anything that says structural variance. So I mean, just based on that, I would also requ- recommend that the ZBA seek town council opinion to see if a roof sign is a. Um, allowed use. Um, and I, I think it is a use variance, which we don't grant anymore. Um, so I would vote in favor of the way Mimi's requested to, um, alter the letter. Thank you.
And, um. Go back to Mr. Mills.
Your question?
Um. Su- submit nothing. Uh, submit this as written, submit this report, uh, revising it to. Uh, what Mrs. Luttrell recommended.
Um, yeah, I think we can add what Ms. Luttrell recommended. I, I'm with Marnie in terms of, you know, right across the street, there are three other ones. So if, um, and, and very sympathetic to what the business owners are going through in town now. Um, especially, um, when it's. You know, so on food. So I, I, I'm in favor of sending the report with the caveat as the, uh. And Ms. Luttrell.
And Jesse?
Um. So the caveat being that we are recommending that, um. The ZBA seek special counsel? Or, or, sorry, I see town council review?
Yeah, to determine if the, if the sign is lawful.
Okay.
Again, this is a report that's required by the code. The ZBA can follow it to the T. They can. Adjust, adjust their thinking based on what we submitted. They could ignore it. We're not approving the sign. We're only completing our requirement to submit a report. And we either submit a report or we don't. And if we do submit a report, what will it be? Well, we voted on the five criteria. And we're, we've now discussed a- adding a note, which is to. Uh, respectfully ask the ZBA to seek town council's opinion relative to the legality of the sign. And let, let, let council and ZBA. Take it from there. I think that's what we've all agreed to. Mrs. Luttrell?
Just one more quick thing. Um. In response to the, um, the note about the lights pointing upward. It is recommended that the features be updated to reduce light pollution. Um, the, the code requires shielded lights, so it's. Recommended that they be shielded to, uh, follow the code.
I can change that as well.
Okay.
All, all the votes are still okay. You don't, the board doesn't want to re-vote on these items, correct? Okay.
Anything more on this? We'll have Sarah, Karina, uh. Revise the wording according to what we just discussed and then submit it to the, uh. and then submit it to the to the ZBA as the code requires the planning board to do relative to signs. Anything more on this? We'll move on. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. EDC Downtown Initiative Bylaw Status.
This is me again. So the 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 board's like with that with the planning board and, you know, representatives from some other committees as well, including the EDC, obviously, to discuss the latest version of the V mud with Judy Barrett. She was in attendance this time around. I think it was a very productive discussion. There were definitely some some just certain decisions kind of made and agreed upon. There were things like floor area ratio that were discussed in in great detail. Lots of discussion in regards to different facade treatments and streetscape treatments as well as uses and in putting some additional usage within that space. So things are moving forward there, I have not seen another version since then. So we are awaiting that, I believe, and moving forward on next steps. Hoping to open the public hearing for this particular matter. I would say probably January, early February.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or comments? Thanks, Sarah. Next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, which is the planner's report. And warrant article schedule. Karina.
Alright, I have four items to talk about very briefly, I'll do the easy ones first. I just want to point out that the Mass DOT Accelerate bridge projects, the I ninety bridges that are in, which are the Turnpike Bridges, which are in Southborough. They started preliminary, like non-construction type work earlier in December and are planning to do construction the summer of twenty twenty-one. If you want any information on those bridges, I have the at my office. It's Parkerville Road, Cordova Road, Woodland Road, with the replacement anticipated summer of two thousand twenty-one. So those are the three bridges, there's one in Westboro too. The second item I have is, I sent you all conflict of interest requirements. The little workshop you have to listen to and get your certificate and then you have to sign the acknowledgement form for the town clerk and get back to get that information back to them by the twenty-first. We already have Andrews. He submitted his right away. Thank you. And that can go directly to the town clerk. If you copy me or Sarah, then we'll have records so that we know who to pester to get on it if you haven't gotten there yet. Third item is the the warrant is closing on December fifteenth. And as you know, we have some articles, the site plan review revisions, the site plan approval section one seventy-four dash ten, the lighting bylaw, and then there's the ZBA's bylaw sections that they were tweaking. And and of course, we're waiting for the outcome of the EDC's bylaw changes that they're proposing. Sarah indicated we'll be targeting those that we have for end of January, maybe the twenty-fifth or the early February meeting, since the ATM is on March twentieth, Saturday, March twentieth. So that should be good timing. The last thing I have is, I sent you information about the Eagle Scout project at Bigelow conservation area. I received an email today from Robert Stewart. He's the Eagle Scout who's working on this project. And the abutters to that project, he's proposing a wooden platform and upgrading the trail into about three hundred feet into the site off of Bigelow Road between forty-two and forty-four Bigelow Road in order to create a little platform where people can go walk down and look over the wetlands there. It's a very small, simple structure. Currently, he was thinking about having some area cleared right at the entrance for some off-street parking, which I believe may fall on town property with some maybe overlap onto the soft property who owns that parcel that was given to them, donated to them many years ago. Anyway, the bottom line is trying to remember, I lost my train of thought. The bottom line is that there was a petition from the abutting residents in the neighborhood that they're not in favor of this because they don't want cars parking there creating noise and creating impacts. I was made aware that right opposite the the soft property is the DCR property across the street, which also has a school bus turnaround right there. So I had indicated to Robert Stewart, the Eagle Scout. I don't know if he's working on it to get his Eagle Scout, but his this he is his Eagle Scout project, that if he includes parking, it may require site plan approval, which then would require a plan stamped by an engineer showing the parking. Or he may be willing to eliminate the parking there and just move forward with improving the trail surface, clearing out the invasives and building his small wooden platform structure, which would require a building permit, I would believe. So the question is, Dawn, and maybe you can remind me, because I talked to you this afternoon, what the alternative was. I think it was on oh, I'm sorry, just came to me, light bulb came on. I want to know if the planning board would entertain having this on the agenda for January eleventh as a discussion item to have the Robert Stewart, the young man who's looking to get his Eagle Scout project done, come and discuss the project and explain and get some feedback from the planning board to kind of determine what his next steps would be, what his options would be. In other words, if he does A, then he'd be required to do site plan approval. If he eliminates this, then he may not need to do that and would just go to conservation where he is right now or obtain his building permit. So the bottom line is, would the planning board be on board with having this as a discussion item on the next planning board agenda? It would also include the most likely the public attending from the neighborhood petition who would give their side of the story as well. Dawn, I can't hear you.
Oh yeah, sorry, I yeah, I'm in favor of that, Karina and I, we discussed that this afternoon. It's beneficial, the planning board, to be the platform for having the Eagle Scout proponent get his message out, present it. You saw the package in our packet of a very well-prepared presentation, so I would welcome it. And then I would also give the 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 public, the neighbors, an opportunity to have a look at it and and speak.
And experience for the for the for the young man to see what a planning board meeting is like and how he would present and whatever, you know, speak to it.
It'll probably change his life. So, okay with the board to put it on the agenda?
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay.
And if he can't make the next meeting, I'll offer up the following meeting, whatever is available that he can attend.
I just had a quick clarifying question, have you had a chance to speak with this gentleman, Karina? Like to let him know that these are all the potential, like expensive things that would need to be undertaken? And does he have like backup plans? Because I don't know, I look at a a very, you know, an orchestrated petition that the neighborhood signed off on. It's pretty compelling that says, you know, we we really don't want this. And I I understand he's put a really good presentation together, but like I I just, I want to be mindful of both our time and his time, just to make sure if you've already shared kind of what are the the potential implications of decisions that he makes.
I I I did on a bird's eye level, indicating that he would potentially be required depending on what he's proposing. If he's officially proposing parking, if it is required for that use, which is the building commissioner's interpretation of what the code requires for parking there, then, you know, it would trigger a little bit more extensive involvement with some additional cost. So I didn't talk to him specifically, just kind of generically, and he's been talking to other departments. He may be, I I believe he's willing to not have any parking assigned there, which would change potentially his path to achieving this project. It may just be for, you know, bikers or walkers who like attend or go to any of the other trails in town.
We're starting to drift away from
Oh, yeah.
Putting it on the agenda as opposed to actually discussing it, and this is not on our agenda tonight.
No, just for administration.
So is it, is it okay with the board to invite him?
Well, I'm not in favor, but you've got four in favor, so that's fine.
And encourage dialogue between the town planner and the proponent.
Yes.
Very good. Anything else, Karina?
That's it.
Mr. Mills. I think you had
We got through all the minutes, correct?
Correct.
Oh, then I'd like to make a motion that we mandate that the entire planning board, specifically Karina, Sarah and Kate and the rest of us members have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I miss seeing you guys all in person. I get to see Jesse once in a while and, you know, I go in and see Karina and Sarah and I I saw Dawn when he was driving around, I think before the snow. It's hopefully this coming year, we'll we'll be back in our our normal seats.
Yeah, I can't believe Christmas is next week.
Oh, my gosh.
I did, it dawned on me today, I mean, I didn't even decorate my tree yet. You got a tree.
Bring on twenty twenty-one, goodbye twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-one.
Our hospitals got their first doses of vaccination today, so Brigham Ossama also, we've got a good hope, I think.
Well, it depends on the vote on this motion. If it
Oh, no.
If this motion carries, then I think all of your wishes, positive things may come true. So motions have been made and seconded, any more discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Morris, yes.
Stein, no, just kidding, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Sulehan, yes.
Very good. Mr. Mills.
Want you to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Other than thanking Kate again, we're under three hours, Kate.
I know.
I see your smile, that's good.
Under two and a half hours, motion's been made and seconded, any more discussion?
I have one last thing, I want to hope Sam has a Merry Christmas too. I know he's a almost a de facto member of the planning board.
He is here.
Calling him out there before, I don't, is he still out there?
He is.
He is.
Merry Christmas, Sam, and Happy New Year.
Yes, I also want to have a discussion point that we were extremely efficient tonight and got through three public hearings, including two votes, which is just an extraordinary job by the planning team. Thank you all.
It's a team. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Any more discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes, happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Good to see you.
Bye now. Thanks, Sarah, Kate.
Oh, you're welcome.
Mimi.
I'm finally caught up.
It was a good goal.